...thirteen, it is now six p.m. Mr. Garcia, can you please call the room?
Mayor, Councilman, and Mrs. Rivera.
President.
Councilman Joe, first, Congressman Junior. Here. Councilman Frank Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilwoman Rachel Williams. Councilwoman Kate Curtis.
She asked to be excused, she's still in the hospital with her dad.
And Councilman Andres, will we... Mayor, the amount of work.
Can everybody please rise to the platform immediately?
In the name of the United States of America, and in the Republic of Puerto Rico, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll move down to citizens' communications, and it would be three minutes for each person. And after citizens' communications, I will no longer be taken in to the... And I have to leave.
Thank you, I'd like to give you just a short update on the Status of the Main Street Program. As you know, we have the state coordinator coming to visit on June seventeenth, which is a week from today. At that meeting, she will tell us what it is necessary in order to fill out the application. One thing about the application that I'd like to remind you is that this needs to be a city-driven process. It requires a full-time city employee. Plans are that Partners for Progress, which has been set up as a nonprofit, they raise money and donate it to the city to pay the expenses of the Main Street Program. The Main Street Program will bring with it free help from the state and from the federal government, as well as access to significant new grants. One of the requirements of the program is that it have strong management. Because we are bringing other people's money in, and we expect to bring in several hundred million dollars, that we need strong, professional city management. And we need to make sure that we have the systems in place, and the procedures and processes in place, so we have accountability and transparency with everything that is done with money in the works. So, towards that end, Diane and I would like to propose to the council that we provide our services at no cost, and we give you a leadership and strategic planning seminar which would extend over several days, or several weekends. And in that, we would help the city develop the processes and the codes of conduct and the things that are necessary in order for us to be accepted into the Main Street Program. If we are not able to do that, or if you don't want to do that, and if you think you're unable to make those commitments, then I strongly suggest that we cancel the meeting for the seventeenth of June, and that we plan to reapply for the Main Street when we have what we all believe is a good, well-run, professional city management. So I'm not suggesting that the city's not run correctly today. I'm suggesting that if we're going to run a couple hundred million dollars through here, we need accounting systems, we need the codes of conduct, we need reporting procedure, we need posting procedure, so that we can share everything that is going on and with the citizens' practice. This is for the citizens' practice of the government. Thank you.
Mr. Chupinian? So, um, I'm here today because on item number eight on the agenda, which states discussion, possible action, the city council of Brackville hired a service of a special investigator to confirm the validity of a report that is being handed to you all. I feel at this time that those councilmen should pass, so this pass, I feel that the councilmen voting on it should be the ones who put the bill instead of our tax dollars that should be put into something that can be done in another way without it costing the taxpayers money. That money could very well be put to better use, and I'm sure there are if, that y'all will, some of you will have questions, but there's ways that you can go about getting this information rather than spending tax dollars on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chupinian. Mr. P. Sue Conso?
Yes, I'm here. We're on the second floor, um...
Is that fair or just?
Um, no, it's council.
Okay. You should ask me to step up to the podium, because I can't hear you.
Please step up to the podium, please. Yes. Okay. Thank you. Can you hear, sir? In regards to item number eight, I also would just like to ask, when you say special investigator, that brings to mind a huge thief. And I would also like to ask that you very seriously consider having alternative means to reviewing the records before you make that decision to hire an outside investigator. The data should be relatively easy to interpret. You know, it's numbers, there's columns, there's people who are on the sold to, there's balance, there should be data where money was deposited, that can all be looked at and verified by either a committee on your council or by other employees. It's just that, again, we all know as, as a public servant, we all know the economic situations in Brackville and Kenny County, and our resources are limited. And I feel like those resources for a special investigator might be used in a more beneficial way for, like, for another use. And I would just ask you to take that into consideration very carefully, and remember that, you know, your decisions as all of those are public servants, we are held accountable by our public. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Timmore?
And, uh, just a question, will you make your presentation?
Okay. And we have, what did he go with?
I'll just wait a minute.
And after this, I'm not...
Uh, that's fine, I'll, I'll get that, uh, that thing.
Okay.
Whatever's not that important.
Thank you. We'll now move down to item number five, council meeting. Anybody have something they'd like to say?
Mr. Brown, thank you for coming back today. And first of all, I apologize for not making this even previous meeting. It's gonna be an excuse by submission, okay? Anyways, I'm kind of excited about the project myself, and I encourage the community to embrace the project, as long as my fellow councilmen here, councilmen. This is something new for us, and revitalizing our community, helping to move on in the ways of the citizens' development. So, again, thank for coming, and hopefully we can always...
I'd like to say that it's great to see a full house here tonight. I wish it was like this every month, so people can be aware of what is going on. So thank you for attending tonight.
Thank you. John and Diane, I would also like to thank you both. And I believe from the very beginning, we were all for, you know, this, improving the city and progress, and we all agreed on that. Now, we never at the last minute of meetings say we were not for this. We wanted to talk to Mr. Esser first, and then move on. That's what we requested.
Thank you. Mr. Garcia?
I don't know what it is.
This one, this one?
I just simply like to reiterate what the mayor said about the attendance tonight. Very gratifying, made to see something keep going every night. I would express an interest in this one, and what she said, it would be nice if any of you could help with places. It would be wonderful for the city and the population. Would I just give you a response?
Thank you. Anyone else? We'll now move down to new business. Item number six, discussion possible action letter of support Kenny County, TXCTDG, two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, Colonial Construction Fund Application.
Mayor, council, as, 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 Mr. Esser will be here to make a short presentation and explain what this is all about.
Thank you, Mr. Ester. Mayor, council members, members and audience guests tonight, I think probably everybody knows me, I'm Carl Esser. I'll introduce myself, I'm a devalley consultant with Esser and Company. As many of y'all know, we have a full-time community development, creative management, business there in Devalley. And we're here tonight to discuss a little bit of business with the city of Brackville. There's an opportunity that exists currently through June the seventeenth, where Kenny County can apply for CBGD monies at the Colonial Construction Fund. These funds are currently used, identified for use in an unappropriated area of the county where they're in a recognized or designated colonial or area that has been existing since nineteen seventy, uh, nineteen ninety, one hundred and fifteen, nineteen ninety. There's an act in Congress called the Greenson and Dogg Act, or that act was passed nineteen ninety to allow counties to provide water, sewer, and street infrastructure improvements to areas that Brackville's faced with in need. So, the scene, what we're here to discuss is that Kenny County currently proposes to apply for five hundred thousand dollars with Colonial Construction Fund, that's the maximum amount. And the priority has been identified to extend the new water main from the edge of Brackville, where it currently exists right now, there's a six-inch line. And to extend that all the way to what I call Mason Road, or Highway, say Highway six ninety-three, it would run along Highway ninety here, it would replace the old existing two-inch line that's been there, existence for fifty years plus. It would also serve the areas, the residents that live out here along Mason Road, and it would all be reconnected to this new building. We've got a proposed match, I'd like to share that with the council members, we all use. Y'all may know, uh, Mr. David O'Nard, engineer, engineer, and other projects. The city of Brackville actually plans to set construction for a new standard, standing fire, out here on three thirty-four, the rehabilitation assistance of the rehabilitation of the transportation here and now, and that's a number of protection by the city for the town itself. If you look at that right quick, you'll see that we propose currently to install about ninety-seven hundred meter feet of six-inch water main. Also go out here in front of the city annex, the city annex will be reconnected to this new main. This project will also allow the fire protection, but also propose to install some fire height throughout the route there along Highway ninety, the right way there for increased fire protection. And one main thing that we also propose to do is start reconnecting those existences, residences out there is that we propose to create a loop, whether there may be any spill or stagnant water in the line right now, the line dead ends, and as many of y'all probably realize, the line dead ends, there's no circulation when I put any spill or stagnant. So we're providing a four-inch loop to go around the little colonial area out there in the community, where it'll always be a key as far as the fresh water. I would like to add, it would be a commitment on the city of Brackville as far as a match, uh, no cash match, as far as the city is concerned. But then, if the city of Brackville is the water service provider, that you all are currently the water, water service provider, is that when the project is done and complete, contractor who is sure to install the improvements, should currently be successful in getting funded, and he emphasized this is only an application, there's no guarantee this, these funds are, these applications are very, very competitive. And the state of Texas is currently receiving best monies, about twenty-six percent of best funds. Currently, they were three years ago from the federal agency, housing, urban development, so as a result, there's a lot of best money that are available for the little communities in Texas, so as a result of that, the application is pretty good. But should, is that a basis?
I'm, I work for a next company, not for me, water supply, water pressure.
Yes, I'm not, I'm not even here, but I know, I know me, but I guarantee it, I know that it's a pressure rate in the city.
And we can cross the border, it's like you can cross Highway ninety.
Correct.
And you can four hundred and thirty.
We'll have to get a permit from Highway eighty-one, to be able to do that.
Oh, pardon?
Yes. Are we looking at annexation here, annex in that property up there, or, I didn't catch it, I don't hear very well, so I didn't hear what you might have said. Annexation does enter... Annexation does enter... We just want to get the area airborne capacity. Let me get this clear in my mind. Annexation does not enter into the picture, is that correct? Sir? Annexation does not enter into the picture, perhaps. And how much did you say this was worth? Five hundred thousand dollars. Well, I see nothing but pluses. The financial, construction, engineering, infrastructure, everything. And accounting return, let me order the city for it. Education of the project, or what? The completion of the project, and the special with the only city, that's correct. The county applies to it to body water or shoreship.
And you did say no matching funds?
No matching funds on behalf of the cities. Yeah, the thing is with the number of entities, because the counties are the only ones that elevate the water. So it's worth it, the number of times that we've been successful in needing an application study, uh, but using the water system, search, library, accessible, construction, and, yeah, it's very exciting.
And the pipes are over fifty years old, we stated. The pipes, they need to be replaced.
Yeah. Carl, I'm in a neighborhood that I knew you a lot, Mary. Wow, Mary did talk to you, but I couldn't hear you. We're the same level. I may have the same problem.
So. I think this is a great idea, it's gonna help both the city and I, I think it's true. I love anybody else, Mr. Ester.
Well, I, this sounds like a pretty good idea. I mean, we're getting a lot, and there's no matching fund. Hey, I hope y'all read the letter or not, I read it right quick, this is Tom McFaker, he's a specialist up there at the U. Penn program, Texas Department of Agriculture, and he regards to the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen Colonial Construction Application, he said, there, Mr. McFaker, says, please accept this matter as confirmation that the city of Brackville, as the water service provider, will accept ownership of water service infrastructure, propose Masonville Colonial Residence, as identified Kenny County's two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen Colonial Construction Fund application. Please feel free to contact my office, should you have need for additional information, call us.
Does that have any objection, so have a motion to, sorry, go ahead, a motion, motion by, by, no, it is a secret. Sent by all women, yes. All in favor? All in favor, not opposed?
Thank you, ma'am.
Please do. We'll now move down to item number seven, presentation by city manager on comprehensive report on water sales data that included voter readings from January first, two thousand twelve, in accordance with agricultural and contract accounts from all existing sites.
Mayor, council. Uh, for the record, the information you have before you is a result of a request submitted by three council members. I need to show on record that does not include all city water users, users that are beyond the city limits. It only targets certain users and not a... Also, for the record, the information that you receive is not consistent with the city records, how we keep them in our process. The city staff had to create the spreadsheets that you have for this specific information that was requested. The act states that any entity does not have to create a document or information that is requested. They go to the city council, or, or, currently, if you will, advise me to present the information as you requested. That's what you have before you. The, also, I want to advise, or go on record, stating that I offered to show city council members the entire billing, billing data process at City Hall. No one took me up on that offer. Legal council, council members are well aware of my concerns with certain users or customers being singled out in the city. Having said that, and we again say that, thanks for letting your question be before you. The spreadsheet that was handed out to you earlier today, you have today, it's a little longer to produce that document. It required staff to record each and every individual receipt. This is for on-demand customers that pay as you go, if you will, and also the, or holiday, if you will, or service from the standpipe behind City Hall. So you'll go to your sheets there, in the industrial accounts, let me make one correction, if you'll go down to Chase Ward calling, you see forty gallons, sixty dollars. We didn't actually have a reading there, which you see now on the reading, is the actual reading on the meter. Beginning was three nine, nine thirty-five, and present page, the last reading was nine three nine. And...
Mr. Garcia, see that? Oh, this is supposed to accept the two forty gallons for this figure? What, what, are you telling that, that figure of forty gallons is incorrect? I assume that.
Yep. It's, the forty gallons is correct, on the, I didn't even have, this is the reading that we have. Now, if that number is, I'm so high-hollered about it, that number isn't fact, if I'm getting it correctly, that was, but there, there, there was no reading after this one, this is the number that I'm sure, but I would correct that to me right away. Also, if you look on your second sheet, that is a list of all customers, body name and dates. This was all the on-demand, as needed, at the, at City Hall. Now, I'll, I'll bring to your attention on the second sheet, you will see that the numbers changed in July. And the reason for that is, on July twelfth, the council amended the, the ordinance, which included a industrial water rate and various deposits and surcharge for the industrial rate. So you will see there, number of dollars, loss and surcharge. Any questions?
Yes, sir. I do not see, uh, any readings for the people, the people calling water on Spring Street.
That, that would be, um, the one on the end far right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that would be the, if you look down on the industrial accounts, you see one, two, three, four, the fifth item down, there's your reading on that one. And then if you'll see on, on that next one down, the same company, they, they reserve water from behind City Hall, that's, you see on the notation. Now, in, in City Hall, when we get there, we only, we take meter readings, the customer comes in, pays for the water first, goes outside with the receipt, at which time, we take the meter readings before the meter readings. And the reason we take those meter readings is to be able to address these issues questions as far as water usage compared to water loss. If we hadn't recorded those, it would all show up on your master account as water loss. However, when people come in to purchase water on a demand basis, mostly are agriculture, so they are charged the same rate as the residential. So they have a ten-dollar rate for the first three thousand gallons, and they are charged by trip, not by day. So if they make four trips in one day, then they get charged each time they show up, even though they may not take their three thousand gallon of water. So that's how that is, that is calculated, we don't, we don't read the meter and charge by year, by month, because it's all a demand basis. So that's why that report took a little bit of extra time, because we had to go through every single receipt.
Let's go see it.
Yes, sir.
Let me just preface, I don't understand what time I can, but this thing, there's been a lot of concern with this community, and this doesn't originate from me or any of the council members here. We're talking about a community concern about the downed water that's there, so that hasn't sold, in all probabilities, could be, and so, I don't know, I cannot answer that question. But the reason I put this out of my agenda was because of that concern voiced by the public. And this doesn't originate from me or any of the council members here. We're talking about a community concern about the amount of water that's there, so that has been so... In all probability, it's been, so I don't know. I cannot answer that question. But the reason I put this out of my agenda was because of that concern voiced by the public, voiced by the people in the city of Rockville, who have a very sincere, have a different concern about the water. Any of them that don't think that they remember the crisis of nineteen sixty-four, I'm sure you can remember because they have that part, part eight, in nineteen sixty-four, that, uh, Springfield, and the city of Rockville that totally dropped. Some of you people that knew to the communities may not know that, but we were in a very, very different situation. Uh, my memories are not very fond memories of the days. My dad, we went to Del Rio there to, uh, to obtain water, to transport it in to the five gallon trucks. People had a can for themselves. Other people went to eat the past, some people went to the valleys, some people died in the ranches. Uh, a myriad of ways, people have paid part. Of this situation, we certainly don't want to see it repeat itself.
Well, our levels of our wells, we're doing pretty good in our wells. We've... We're not in no type of droughts. We're no danger at all. I understand... I understand where the citizens are coming from.
That's... I recognize it.
I was referring to that only as a point of reference, okay? Uh, we have been in a drought recently. We got quite a bit of rain, but certainly helps the situation. But another point I want to make is that, at least from my perspective anyway, I'm not targeting any individual. That's not my form. That's not my intent. My intent is to satisfy the public as to how much water is being sold, the home, and the whereabouts of revenue that the provider sets sales. Another point I'd like to make before I continue with any comments I may make, Tony, is this information is not subject to the Open Records Act. On my honor of month of fifteenth, I requested this information under the Open Records Act. I did not get what I wanted, so therefore I requested it of council members, and then I've been elected to this position. And I'm in a position of authority, so to speak, to request this information. And that's why I requested it because of the concern voiced by so many people in this town. Now, let me, uh... Let me just make one more point. We got this report, right? We got this report today. I'm gonna ask you, are you prepared to attest to the totality and the authenticity of this report which you have presented?
Where you want me to start?
I just want you to verify that it's truly correct, okay? It is true.
Where you want me to start? As best my knowledge, it's truly correct. I'm simply asking you if there's a rational fear. I'm not gonna get into a shot match with anybody, but I do want an answer. And I'm glad you brought this matter to my attention because I had understood that. I knew that wasn't mine, so I highlighted it, but it was not the point I needed to disqualify. Okay. Are you... Are you through with your statement, sir?
If you... If I may, the, uh... The reading there where it says forty gallons is a technical error. It should be four hundred gallons. It is a pre-ounce meter, so it was, uh... That should be reflected four hundred. But that makes more sense.
Well, let me make a statement, I'm sorry. These reports are done by the girls who actually deal with this data every day, the ones who put this together because they know the cells of what's being sold. So I... I sound a little bit agitated on how accurate these readings are as well. Go ahead, Sharon.
Uh, Mr.... If I may... If I may comment on this person. As far as I understand, your questions or your concern that citizens are concerned, um, I've always had an open door policy, anytime, any day, twenty-four seven, people can call me and ask me a question and address their concerns. With respect to the water levels and the... And, uh, the availability of water, since I've been on this position, I began to read the wells, measure the wells, if you will, on a weekly basis. I did that for about six months, and that didn't give me the data that I wanted, so I started measuring those wells daily, same time every day, five days a week, sometimes six days a week. So I was pretty well aware of where we were sitting with the special water supply, because I would compare that to our drought contingency plan and believe we got anywhere near requesting the citizens to back off on the water. Any... Any contractor, any agency that was using water outside the city limits would receive the letter, certified letter from me advising them that in very near future, they would be... Their meter would be shut off to protect the water levels in system, with the system. Now, um, a lot of people don't know this, but the well sitting behind the school administration office, that well is about twelve hundred feet deep. The well behind City Hall is about eight hundred and twenty feet deep. At no time in my tenure here have we reached anywhere near the even step one or stage one of our drought contingency plan. And that contingency plan, uh, as you well know, had to be approved by PCQ. So it is... It is in fact a solid document to review it every year. I sit with our, uh, operator, Mr. Randy, and we go over the numbers and see whatever changes the, uh, PCQ of the Water Development Board have come forward with, so we make sure that they're compliant.
Mr.... Mr. Garcia?
Yes, sir.
How many dispensing sites are on the...
Well...
Another one at City Hall.
Okay, we have... We... At one time, well, we currently have two, three, two. We have one where we have contractors taking water there and the fire hydrant on the Wee Street. We have the meter there. We have a... A location out at the track view. And then, of course, the... The dispensing site at the standpipe at the... At City Hall. So right now, that's what we have active in this time.
You got three?
Yes, sir.
How about the one on, uh, Spring Street, there, my...
No, sir. That has been... That has been shut off since, let's see, I would say April. If you look, there are no meters on that fire hydrant. One time, we had two meters there. We currently have no... No meters at that fire hydrant.
Okay, there. Is that correct? That is...
Yeah, that is correct.
Let me ask you this.
Yes, sir.
I noticed on this report that you gave was about nine, that all the dispensing sites were for the City Hall. So all these... All these structures were made from that dispensing site located at City Hall. Is that correct? Am I reading this right?
Uh... Yes, sir. When we started off with yes, sir, for the... For example, the one that has the numbers on it that was done at the Spring Street,
Yeah, did you have City Hall and for entities?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
The addition for the dispensing...
And the reason they're there is because they are industrial accounts, and they... They... We bill them on a monthly basis, so that's why they sit in this report versus the other report that you have on demand. They dispense from both places, but they're two different scenarios. These people on this first report, we... We collect from them on a monthly basis, we send them a bill, and they... They get back.
Make sure I get it straight on my mind. These are strictly on the City Hall, correct?
The ones that are here, yes, sir, except for the ones with meter readings. Well, you see the meter readings? On the numbers, for example. Fourth one down, thirty-two oh two three zero, actually five two oh two five, that's Spring Street. The other one down there from, um, three five six eight zero zero, okay, that is... That was also on Spring Street, I'll hold you up. Okay? Uh... Eight eight zero, that was Spring Street. That was right? And the trucking company with the number nine eight two three two zero, that's also on Spring Street. And the agricultural account, they're on City Hall?
Yes, sir.
And how about... How about the... The reporting gadgets today?
Yes, sir. That is all of the City Hall standpipe.
All on...
All made up from City Hall?
Yes, sir.
On demand as needed, and then the standpipe from City Hall.
Mr. Garcia, which accounts were from the Wee Street and then the track view?
The ones that are... That are in fact, uh, if you look down here, the one... The one that says, um, on or off the, uh... That says City Hall, that should be Wee Street, I'm sorry. The one that is still currently open, and then the four hundred gallon one, that is off of the standpipe at, uh, three thirty-four, the track view.
Not City Hall?
Uh... No, man. That is the track view, for better reference.
And the agricultural accounts are all from City Hall?
Yes, sir.
Am I reading this correctly? Mr. Garcia? Anybody have a question?
Yeah, what's... Where's the accounting for the, uh, water sold in the Wee Street?
Uh, if you look at that, sir, it's... It's one, two, three, uh...
Nine nine seven.
On the top?
Yes, sir. That hard block? No, sir. Come on, about that.
One more question, sir. It's our team official. Once they pay their... Their account, is that going to be part of it into a water account, a bank, or a general fund?
All accounts go into the general fund, sir.
Okay. I keep hearing the Wee Street.
Yes, sir.
Which one specifically was from the Wee Street? Because they all sit in City Hall.
No, if you'll... If you'll go down, sir, again, the first, if you go down, they honk off to this.
Okay, what's the name of the company?
I... I don't wish to divulge it if you have the information there. Unless counsel tells me, I can identify... I do not identify customers, and I mentioned earlier, I'm very concerned about identifying customers and keeping their privacy.
Those would be the nine four and down from the list. And I said, yes, sir, it says one on their account.
Who was Genesis, uh, calling water for?
Excuse me?
Genesis, I saw it front with Genesis on there, and I believe they're from, uh, I mean, W two W support.
Yes, ma'am. They are, um... They are contracted, see the account and report there to News Office. They take the bill.
Am I hearing you correct? You said that there were names that you cannot divulge?
I... I will not divulge.
You don't?
That's it?
That?
Yes, sir. You have... You have the information in front of you, okay? This document is what I'm referring to. And if you're asking me to... The company name or the customer name, and I respectfully ask you not to ask him that name, I will not give it.
Is there a reason for you to refuse?
Yes, sir. I am concerned.
I'm all ears.
I'm concerned with liability.
We have our attorney here present. Sir, Mr. Attorney. Are any of these names, any of these people who bought water to the city of Rockville, whether they be industrial, agricultural, commercial accounts or otherwise, is that confidential or privileged information?
We have provided to council the, uh, legal opinion.
That's what I'm asking you.
And the answer is, is our legal opinion that is not confidential. Um, however, there is a difference of opinion between administration and legal counsel and some of the council members. And so the best way that we hopefully could address this, if there is still an issue, would be to request an attorney general opinion. I don't... I don't believe you can force the man to say the name, but you have a list there, and you can... You can definitely say it if you want to provide our legal opinion.
I don't know which one he's talking about. I don't know him.
For example, Mr. Garcia told you the nine one down, just count to the number nine and say the name.
Okay, I see. That's K West. That... To me, that's not confidential information. That's public information.
Right, but we gave you legal opinion.
You gave me a legal opinion?
It was supposed to be provided...
I didn't see it.
On everyone's...
I didn't see it.
Your right.
I hadn't seen a legal opinion, again.
Again, I did not personally hand it to you, Mr. Garcia, but I made a request from the city, uh, from the administration's, the administration's office to provide a report or provide a copy of that legal memo. There's about two or three legal memos.
Is there a reason, uh, Mr. Garcia, why we didn't get a copy of that legal opinion?
Uh, yes, sir. I, uh... I had planned to put that in a package, be the record council meeting of July, of June eleventh, and a reason...
That... That legal opinion was pertinent to this meeting, not to meetings in the future. That... That legal opinion was totally relevant to this meeting here. That's why I insisted that the attorney be here for this very reason. Okay, your opinion, a synopsis. Give me a brief synopsis of your opinion.
Just as you and I have had a number of telephone calls the last week. And in those telephone calls, I've explained to you our legal position with respect to the confidentiality, um, of these documents and the sensitive nature of some of these documents, or some of the information contained within the documents. I've also explained to you that there was a difference of opinion between administration and legal counsel. And I explained to you that the best way to address that issue would be to request an attorney general opinion. That way it wasn't legal saying this or administration saying that, but we had an authoritative figure address that. There's certain information that we know for sure is confidential. If, for example, Key West was to provide a specific account, like a checking account, we have already been informed by previous AG decisions that their bank account is confidential and should be redacted from any information that is provided. A social security number, for example, if there's a... On the check or on the...
That's not what we want to.
I understand, but, for example, before you came onboard, you submitted an Open Records Act request as an individual citizen, and that ended... And that request was general in some sense, and so we asked you to provide a more descriptive wording as to what exactly you needed.
And I defined every term that needed to be defined quite specifically.
Correct. And we provided you the information that was available at the time, and we informed administration that they were not under AG, previous AG decisions, that they do not have to formulate, um, anything that's not already in existence. That's why when you came onboard, my legal advice to administration was make all of the records, if it takes... if it takes a computer, turn it on, and you have all of the account information there, make all those records available to Mr. Garcia, which I understood took place, and that you went to City Hall. But you didn't want any of that.
I went to City Hall, I did not see any record, I did not request any, uh, that would feel like a little purple.
Yeah, but I, I asked you to take the time to go down there because Key would have that information available to you, some of which may be confidential. You may have seen some social security numbers there, some privacy.
Let me tell you what, what Mr. Garcia had available, let me tell you, uh, if I remember correctly, of this, the, the benefit of the commercial customers who dwell within the city limits, the City of Rockville, the primary purpose, uh, water purpose, domestic use, washing, cooking, things of that nature. Hey, that's not the information that I've been at, and that's not the information we're after tonight. Let me say one other thing. Apparently there's a discrepancy here between you and administration. We hired, I need a counsel, I, I was on the council, and I was mayor, you were the city attorney at that time. Your opinion should supersede what administration says. Not my opinion. If not, then why do we need you? If we're gonna take his word over yours, why do we need you?
I only provide legal opinions, such as my clients and followers.
You're the one that told me that there was a problem, there was a difference between you and administration. If you're gonna be the attorney, then we need to take your advice, not administration. Administration, the administration does a clear delineation between administration and legal, I think you know that.
What I informed you, as well as, uh, Mr. Garcia, was rather than legal acting without formal majority, um, decision being made by the council was to bring this as an item on the agenda so that I could be authorized to request an H G opinion. That was, that was the issue.
Well, I was entitled to copy that opinion that you rendered, if not before me tonight, shipping. Now, at this point, I pretty much, oh, I have one other question. Who is Genesis Waterwell?
Ms. Munoz already asked that question.
Perfect.
Ms. Munoz already asked that question.
Well, I didn't hear it.
Can you turn the demonstration? Yes.
Who is, who is?
They are a contractor that hauls water for the company that has the project.
Are they on this list? I don't see them on this list.
Because they do not have an account. They are subcontractors from a company that is listed here. That is company number nine that is on your list.
Here again, I ask for a complete report.
And you have, you have a complete report, sir, because Genesis does not show up anywhere in our billing database.
Well, they certainly loaded all the water and exported it to the City of Rockville.
And again, I repeat to you, sir, they are hauling for their customer. They are subcontractors to a project. The company that is doing the project for Lawton Air Force Base does not have the capability of hauling water to their site. So hence, they contracted Genesis Trucking out of Carizo Springs to haul the water for them. And we so, I mean, Genesis does not and has not had an account with the City of Rockville.
But they didn't.
That's not on this list.
They didn't purchase water?
No, sir.
They did not?
They hauled water.
They're, they're a subcontractor, but they didn't purchase. Now, we didn't get it straight.
Well, I mean, you know, we're trying, that's my question. They are hauling water for a customer that purchases water from the cities.
And who is that company?
That customer number nine on your list.
It's the same one you've been talking about.
I can answer, but I'm not telling.
Any other discussion, one second? We'll now move down to executive session, item number nine. Executive session pursuant to section five five one. The City Council of Rockville hire a service of a special investigator to confirm the validity of the water sales data presented by the city manager. And this was something that you wanted to have done, Mr. Garcia?
Well, I, I still have, uh, I still have some concerns regarding this situation. So, any other discussions, any other matter, I'll concentrate on that.
Mayor, if I can address the question? Hiring a service of, uh, special investigators, and the request was made to confirm the validity of the water sales data. Those of you that requested this, this information are, as this is an agenda item. I don't know if you realize what you've done, or even care, it's a point of order there. Requesting, I have a point of order there.
He's, he's so fucking.
This is a council decision, he made the presentation, he's not part of this council.
He's making his opinion.
Go ahead, Mr. Garcia. Requesting a special investigator is, is wrong on so many levels, not just because it's unnecessary expense. We all know that, we can't afford a lot of expense. But more importantly, the message it sends to all the city employees that some council members do not support them, do not trust them, and go as far as to question their integrity. And I'm referring to those employees that go and read the meters, the office staff that does the billing process. How do you think that makes them feel? I too am an employee of the city. Then it makes me feel very good either, especially when I'm questioned by integrity. It's not easy to condemn the staff that they've done nothing wrong, that it's me that some of you are after. The fact of the matter is, I did put these numbers together. I had nothing to do with putting these numbers. These numbers reflect the readings that were brought in from the field, then entered into the billing database by the staff. This also includes, as I, as I presented to you, those people that use water as a basis at City Hall. But let me say this, I know, I understand, some of you would not understand what goes, what goes on in the process that's used to ensure that everything is done up to board. I sometimes don't see some of you, maybe twice a week, twice a month, wants to pick up your check, and wants to pick up the monthly meeting agenda packet, and that's done in the drive-up window. It just, it's just, it's just. The way that you affect so many people's lives, it's really not right. You affect them directly by leading people to believe that employees of the city are not honest. Indirectly, you affect the entire citizens of Rockville and the county.
So you, so do your actions.
And you're not. Or economically, let me put it this way, indirectly, you, you affect them economically because you think people would be willing to invest in the City of Rockville when you have a governing body that has no trust in their employees? It's just, it's just, I just have to say it again, you affect so many people's lives by doing something like this.
Mr. Garcia.
Mr. Garcia, you affect a lot of people's lives too, and, believe it or not, citizens were coming to us and asking for this information, and I believe you and I spoke, and you told me you were not taking any money, you weren't stealing, that's what you said, and I said, I agree with you. But we've also got to answer to the citizens, and the employees, I believe, they've been around City Hall in this town and have taken place many times, and they understand that we're concerned also for the citizens of Rockville. They need answers. Now, if every time a citizen asks for, for us to explain things to them, if that's insulting you or employees, I, I just don't believe that. We have a right, they elected us, we have a right to answer them.
Ms. Munoz, I also do. I agree with you, Mr. Garcia, but it's council meetings every month, they're more than welcome to come join and see what is going on, to get the information, we're here for them. So, that's why, you know, I'd like to see them at this every month, it would be great. So, if you want to know, come, post to me, we will give you.
But if they don't make it, does not mean that we do not give them information. We have to have accountability.
Mayor, if I may, if I may say something?
Go ahead.
We have a discussion, we don't even have a motion. Are you charging, and you said you called for motion?
We'll make a motion.
Go ahead, Mr. Garcia.
Obviously, we're, we've got the investigation here, and I know that, uh, that you guys are, we've got the investigation here. And I know that, uh, that you guys, the community, the citizens are, are concerned. This, this investigation here, I don't know how much it's gonna cost, I don't know how many votes it's gonna get, and it's gonna be an unprecedented expense. I would like to see both of the employees move to, uh, to make a motion.
I prepared to make a motion, are you, are you ready to take a motion?
I would like to make it known that I'm not approving of this motion. I do see that city employees do feel like they are being pointed at, that they're not doing the job correctly.
You don't have to approve the motion.
I know that, but I'm, I'm making it known, I'm making it know.
Good job, I'm on the speed.
Mayor?
Exactly, thank you.
Mayor, council, um, you can always go into executive session if you have any legal issues or legal questions with respect to the side, and we can address, we have an excited call, so maybe executive session.
We have, item number nine, that's in open session, I, this is an open session.
I, I understand, but if there's legal questions, you can go into executive session. I think that's a good idea. And, and, I'm just saying, and then you can come back if you have legal questions with respect to that.
Alright, we're gonna have a closed session to discuss what, the validity of a special investigator, what, what statutory citation does that fall under?
You're consulting with.
I mean, I'm asking you.
You're consulting with, that, you will be consulting with legal counsel, which allows you to go into executive session. And that, under that, like.
What, what, what's the citation?
We just heard Mr. Councilmember Rodriguez state some reason, uh, a reason that he had, a concern that he had. It could be legal in nature, I'm just giving you an opportunity, if you don't have to, I'm just trying to assist you and letting you know that there's, there's other legal issues or questions.
What would the majority of the council want to do?
That's exactly why I was propositioning this as a possible assistance.
I, I will make a motion and we move up to the side of the closed session.
You, you can come back, that's what I'm trying to tell you, you will go into executive session.
You will not have any closed session.
Who wants to take an executive session? Who has an executive session?
You, you will, you will need a vote if you want to go into executive session and table the matter for, for now. You can come back from executive session and readdress item number eight.
Do I have a motion to table item number eight? A motion by Mr. Rodriguez, seconded by Mr. Gonzalez, on favor? On favor and opposed? So, yeah, I still need session. Executive session pursuant to section five five dot zero seven one and five five line dot zero seven four, chapter five fifty-one, Texas government code consulting with attorney and discussion of personal matters, evaluation of the city manager, Henry Garcia, and possible disciplinary action included by not limited determination of employment in open session regarding the same. June fourth, two thousand thirteen, to mayor and city council of Rockville, Texas, from Henry Garcia, city manager, City of Rockville, Texas. Preference is evaluation of employment. Mayor and city council members, I hereby request under section five five one dot zero seven four, chapter five five one, Texas government code, that any and all deliberation to regard my evaluation, formal discipline, and termination of employment on the City of Rockville, Texas, be held in open session. Respectfully, Henry Garcia, city manager, City of Rockville.
I think you just, there's all that is required.
Now, you can subdue our executive session to address legal questions, but the deliberation with respect to evaluation must be conducted in open session, which is, which we have that requirement.
It's now seven oh nine, and today is June fourth, two thousand thirteen, and we will now be heading into executive session. And today is June fourth, two thousand thirteen, and we discuss item number eight, the section possible action, City Council of Rockville hire and the service of a special investigator to confirm the validity of the water sales data presented by the city manager.
Mayor, you try to permission, I have a corner.
Mr. Gonzalez, do we have to take this up, table, bring it back from the table, please, table, isn't it?
That's fine, if you just came back in open session and started with item number eight?
Yes. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Garcia.
I move that we authorize legal counsel to contact and provide insurance interferences on issues related to water sales data and request, request a formal investigation by the Texas Rangers and our Federal Bureau of Investigation. Furthermore, direct administration and the city manager to fully, uh, cooperate with the investigation and retain all records of the last five years, if available, related to the sales, to sales data. That's my motion.
Do I have second on that?
I'll take the motion.
Motion made by Alderman Garza and seconded by Alderman Rodriguez, all in favor? All in favor, none opposed? And item number nine, executive session pursuant to section five five one dot zero seven one and five five one dot zero seven four, chapter one one five, Texas government code, consulting with the attorney and discussion of personal matters, evaluation of city manager, Henry Garcia, and possible disciplinary action included by not limited determination of employment in open session regarding the same.
Okay, at this time, we're gonna hold on the evaluation, just simply because we don't have a formal evaluation process. So I make motion to authorize legal counsel to conduct a formal evaluation process. It's a holy workshop for the review and approval of that process, as it pertains to the city manager. Once the process is placed, we will hold a formal evaluation of the city manager.
Motion made by Alderman Rodriguez and seconded by Alderman Garza, all in favor? All in favor, none opposed?
If I may, Mayor, can I?
You may.
For clarification, these, this, uh, evaluation process will be fully developed by the, by the legal counsel?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, no, we will put all the information provided to the city council, and then hold a workshop, and you will run the extreme line of process into one simple process form, or whatever it is, whether it's one page or five pages, as a formal evaluation.
Does it mean legal counsel with city council in a workshop to determine what's gonna be on the evaluation form? And then, once it's approved, then we'll go through that.
Okay, so, so, again, please, you know, I understand. So the communication for this thing will be from directly with the city council and legal counsel, correct?
Yes.
Is that what, is that what I'm understanding, the workshops, scheduling the workshops? And this communication will all be with legal and council, or do I?
No, no.
Why you go to the end of this picture, if that's what it is?
Yes, yes, we do.
Yes, sir. My advice would be, I'm only providing information, I'm gonna try to go over as you as the administrator, administrator, city secretary, and say, it's ready, here you go, place a workshop agenda, I don't, let me review it, like we do. Rockville County Nora sends, sends me a copy, I reviewed the workshop agenda, I make changes if I need to. And you, you can provide all of that documentation that I give you to the council. And administration's gonna keep a copy of it, I mean, you, you guys are the, the record folders, the study of records for all that. I'm, I'm still going through you, and it's up to you to say, the workshop, and I'll be present after the debate. I understand that you won't be present after the workshop.
Right, yes.
I got you.
Go ahead, Mr. Garcia.
Uh, Mr. Garcia, we have, we should have on file a copy somewhere, but I was there, we used it for the city secretary's back. And it was very similar to what you use at school, uh, the complete process, including a calendar, okay? We'll, we'll let you know exactly what you're gonna be evaluated with. You will have input, as far as I'm concerned, you'll have input into the development of the actual instrument. And it'll be categorized, different categories, we'll have a rating system, and we'll have an overall score, okay?
If you, if I'm wanting to say that, obviously, they talk about that one, and we can, wanna gather some from, uh, other environmental entities that I've represented, and so, I just wanna give them a wide enough sample, that then they can pick and choose what they feel is best for their evaluation.
I'm sure I can, I can go through the archives and hold out some information, sure.
The, the whole process should be there.
Okay.
If you look back and look at the city secretary's mains, uh, we, we use that to evaluate her.
Okay.
It should be on file.
Sure, I can play it.
Any other comments?
Yes, I just wanna say that we do trust you, my employees. Obviously, we have concerns, and that's why we have a cool house tonight. I guess we should always have concerns, no matter what it is. And I do invite all of you to come back on the next regular scheduled meeting and continue to help the city and the others, thank you.
This is the, uh, this is the US of A, we do have a democratic process, and it does work.
Now, to item number ten, mayor and council comments. Does anybody have any comments?
One question, uh, being glad that Mr. Escher directed the council, is that, if everybody's okay with that, same for.
Can you get us a copy of that, if you want, sir?
Because you want it, want it chapter I signed it, or just a blank out?
I just wanna read the content, so I can, then they see it.
Okay.
It is now eight oh three, and meeting is adjourned, if I have a motion. Motion by Alderman Munoz and seconded by Alderman Rodriguez, all in favor?
Aye.
All in favor, none opposed, meeting is adjourned.